Good morning and welcome to our special city council study session. We're going to be looking at proposals from the Springfield-Green County Health Department as we look to what the subsequent phases look like, timing, that type of thing. So we're going to be hearing from both the city manager and our director of the Springfield-Green County Health Department. So with that, Mr. Gage, good morning, sir.
Good morning, Mayor. How are you?
Well, sir, thank you.
Very good. We'll jump right into it. We'll start with Clay Goddard, our director of the Springfield-Green County Health Department. He'll start us off. You'll see we'll do a little tag teaming on this, and we've got Clay up at the dais, so we don't have to mess with too much movement on the camera. But he'll start us off. He'll talk a little bit about the approach here and get into the health data, the dashboard data, and then we'll come back and I'll start taking us through the, provide a few introductory comments and take us actually slide by slide into the presentation. And then Clay and his staff are here to answer more specific questions about applicability and health risks and things like that. So with that, I'll turn it over.
Well, let me ask procedurally. Would you like to have questions as we go, or should we save them and get through and then ask them, how best?
Yeah, I think right now, after Clay finishes up with the review of the dashboard information, that's a good time. We'll ask for questions then. And then as we get into the actual draft suggested recovery plan and the phases, with each, really with each slide is a separate piece, we'll offer up at each of those opportunities.
Sounds good. Mr. Goddard, good morning, sir.
Good morning, Mayor McClure, members of council. Thank you, Jason. It's an odd feeling to be able to sit down and feel like we've had some time to be thoughtful and lay things out as a potential path forward. But I believe we're on the road to recovery, and so we want to use our data to help guide that. So I would like to start with the current state of COVID-19 to make sure that we are all level set. So, you know, we do have a goal of walking that tightrope between reopening the community very quickly and safely, but also keeping our eyes on the prize, which is, you know, making sure that we don't let this disease get an upper hand in our community. And we've done a good job of that so far, and we're going to continue walking that line, I think, as we move forward until we get a vaccination for this condition. We've presented a document that has a variety of phases, and I think that we've put some timeframes out there for the possibility of those phases. But we have to remember that we're going to really need the data and evidence to guide us going forward. This is going to be a constant monitoring of the condition to help inform us of what the consequences of opening up are, if there are any. And we've developed our dashboard to help inform not only our decision makers, but also our community at large. We want to be transparent about what's going on in our community. And remember, we're going to be looking at five areas, but the first one is that case data, which is really a lens in which we look at this through. But we're really more interested in those capabilities, the capacity to deal as a community with these conditions. So let's start with that case count. We're currently at 105 cases. And if you look at the grayed out area with the blue line at the bottom, we've really just kind of been bumping along at low new cases. And that's backed up by our hospitals' experiences with their ICUs and inpatient data as well. Going to the next slide, I think that the stacked bar chart really tells you a story. Those dark blue bars indicate where we're currently at with active cases. And we're actually now at a level where we're at our lowest active case number since, I believe, March the 20th. And that blue line will give you a little bit of sense of where we're at on an Epi curve. We'll be watching that very closely because we want to see if there are consequences to opening up. We've got a very low case rate, as you can see in a comparative approach on the table to the right. And our capacities are quite good. The testing capacity always separates the pessimists from the optimists in the room because people see the yellow and they get concerned. In this case, yellow is actually a positive. It doesn't reflect that we don't have plenty of test kits. It simply means that we are using our mobile test site at a good capacity. We're pushing people through. We've been doing asymptomatic population testing, and we can expand that. We recently dialed back, and we're not doing testing on Saturdays and Sundays because we didn't have demand on those days. We can easily step that back up if that demand increases. We can easily open up another test site if necessary. We have enough kits to do that work. Also, remember that the hospitals have stepped up their testing as they are going back into elective surgeries. And so we have more testing going on in this community than we've had since this pandemic really reared its ugly head in Springfield and in Green County. Looking then to the region, you know, at one point, regionally, we made up the majority of cases in what's the Missouri Hospital Association Southwest Region. I believe that's 33 counties. Looking at John, I think he's shaking his head. I believe that that's correct. Now we make up, you know, roughly a third of those cases. So I think that what you're seeing there is that we've done a good job. We've done the right things. We've kept our case counts very low. We do have good testing, and we do have good public health capacities in our, in our region. We're going to continue to leverage those public health capacities. The new testing that we've brought on to help us with our Epi investigations, our ability to do quarantine and isolation and interviews for new cases, that is going to become even more critical moving forward because that will be one of the big ways that we control any spikes in disease, is early identification. And then you do disease containment through those age-old tools of quarantine and isolation. So there's an overview very quickly. I know that we do this quite frequently, but I'm happy to take any questions or comments at this time.
Are there questions for Mr. Goddard on his report?
Councilman Simpson.
Thanks, Clay. First, thank you again, not generally for your work on this, but also specifically for these Power BI dashboards. They've been, I think, incredibly helpful in being able to look at the local capacity as well as the regional capacity since we are a medical hub is really useful. Just two quick questions on the data. The first one is, is we're looking to assess the effect of these changes. What is the average lag time? And I know it varies, but what would be the average kind of lag time between the transmission occurring and the case showing up in the data? I've seen some places, you know, 10 and a half days up to two weeks, but I didn't know what your thought on that lifetime was. And then looking at the capacity indexes, obviously, we're doing very well on both of those right now. Do you kind of have an idea of where would be the benchmark where if those dropped to a certain point, you'd start to be kind of concerned?
So first, with the disease presentation, you know, when we quarantine people, it's for a 14-day period, and we know that that's the maximum incubation for this condition. Our practical experience with the condition, though, is that if people are going to develop symptoms, it's typically presented itself here in five to seven days. So I think that conservatively, we can say that we're going to have good data on the, on any potential consequences in that probably 10-day window. And really, if you used a 21-day gating period, which is something we've thrown out there to move into consequent steps in reopening, that may give you good evidence on three to four incubation cycles, definitely two. Robin Trotman, Dr. Trotman, who's infectious disease doc at Cox, said that what they would expect to see in fragile populations is people being admitted into the hospital somewhere in a 17-day window. So that would tell you that they've progressed through the disease and then become critically ill. And that would probably be for folks that are in those higher-risk categories. So I think that you'll start to see evidence in roughly 10 days, and that gives us a good sense of what's going on. To your second question, when those dials get in the yellow, that's really when we need to start looking internally at, do we, you know, it's the Houston, we have a problem moment. Is there a concern? And so we're asking ourselves every time we see that testing go into yellow, what's going on? And making sure that we do have plenty of test kits in the hopper, making sure that we've got the capacity to run the, to stand up another if we need to. And we're in good shape on testing. So the same thing would be in play for our hospital capacities and our public health capacities.
Thank you.
Councilman Lear. I apologize.
Mr. Goddard, thank you. And we'll look forward now to hearing from Mr. Gage.
Before we get into the slides, I have a few sort of introductory comments to make. And first, I would like to speak my appreciation for Clay and his gang at the Health Department. This is a tough time, and it's tough work, and they've done an excellent job. And, you know, when I was a kid, I was with my grandparents, and I was real small and energetic and thought I did something pretty good. And I was talking about it, and I remember my grandmother saying, she asked me if my shoulder hurt, and I said, well, why would my shoulder hurt? And she says, well, I'm afraid you might dislocate your shoulder from patting yourself on the back too much. I can't, I don't want to take the chance ever that Clay dislocates his shoulder, so I want to congratulate him. They've done a great job, and I very much appreciate it. I want to thank everyone for their patience, especially council. This is a tough time when you're a governing body of a city. It's a big deal. And we do have many more months to go. I would like to say, too, from a community perspective, we're doing a very good job, relatively speaking, in our community, the people, the health system, the Health Department, the systems we have in place with testing and tracing and all of that. But we cannot become overconfident. We cannot become complacent. This virus is still here. It's going to be with us for a few months, and that's a pretty big deal. So we always have to keep that in mind. As we think about this phased road to recovery in the document I'm going to speak to, remember right now what you have in front of you are draft recommendations that were a big effort from our Health Department and other folks. It's based on the positive position that we are in right now from a health perspective, and that's important to know, and the confidence we have in our health professionals' capacity for testing, tracing, and treatment. So the reason we can be in this position to not only step down, because there's a lot of pressure across the country to step down, but to be confident in doing it in the right way and doing it in a reasonable way, is quite honestly because of the governance leadership we have here, the city of Springfield, with the mayor and council, the Health Department, and our public's response to the guidance we've provided. It's never perfect, but I think our community's done a very, very good job, and that's why we're here. We need to keep in mind, too, the recovery plan allows us to positively phase down our community restrictions based on an ongoing evaluation of our dashboard that we just talked about and those outcomes, and other relevant information that we'll obtain and constantly evaluate locally, regionally, and across the country that may affect us. So as we think about today, one of the things that we have to contemplate is this is a plan that leads to future orders. There's still orders, and the reason they're orders is because even, and even though they're stepping down, they still affect, in essence, the rights of various personal, various personal rights, commercial rights, and other rights. So there's still orders, though each one is lessening and lessening, which is a very good thing. And so by code, that's an authority granted to the mayor. But what this is, is a planning document, right? This is a, this is a pathway, and it gives, it's a great opportunity today for council to have, hopefully have had a chance to review it. And we worked really hard to get this to you and apologize if we couldn't give you more time, but to provide suggestions, thoughts, concerns, whatever that might be, and really to give the key guidance to make sure that this thing is, in the end, is prudently planned for a recovery phasing. That's the most important thing. And it is and will be used as a groundwork to guide the mayor's future recovery orders. So it's a game plan, and so I don't want to underestimate that. So today, what we're looking for, if we can get it today, would be consensus because the public is pretty eager to see what the future holds because a lot of the things that are happening, especially as summer events, involves some longer-term planning. So we're trying to go out as far as we reasonably can, but to be able to get a guidance document out there in a timely manner is pretty important. Another reminder, too, is that we've really worked with a lot of groups, the Health Department, our public information folks and others, including the stakeholders that deal with sports, thinking about outdoor sports and indoor sports, higher ed, special events, because that's obviously a summer thing, and ongoing business. We've had a lot of ongoing business input and continue to talk with our business representatives, our community leadership. And in general, we've had a lot of input from citizens throughout the whole process. So we take all that. It's important, and we take it seriously, and we try to incorporate all that input. So we've done, our folks have done a lot of work with that. So with that said, we'll hit the phases, and I'm just going to cover some big aspects. We'll get into each one. But as you recall, the stay-at-home order started March 26 and went through May 3. Phase one was, in essence, May 4 through the 25th, and then we had a sort of a 1A, a drop down on May 7 that had a small effect. I don't get into that because your information shows that. But what we're trying to do with the planning is look at about a three-week, what we call a gating period, that allows opportunity to deal with and review the data and make good, reasonable decisions. There's always a possibility that could change, but right now, we think that those dates make pretty good sense to start with. And so as we talk about the next phase, which is a phase two, the timeframe we're looking at potentially is a May 26 to June 14 timeframe. Phase three is a June 15 to July 5 timeframe, and phase four is a July 6 to July 23 timeframe. We do need a little more time. We've talked a lot, and we think of stakeholders. That includes the Ozark Empire Fairgrounds and all the activities there. And we know the fair is coming out here later in the summer, and we're really contemplating that. We think it's a touch early to have any kind of real defined guidance there. And so we have a note in the slide that by mid-June, we think we'll have enough data to be able to assess and really figure out what that phasing would be. And that's, in essence, what we think would be a phase five piece. So that should give us adequate information for that. So as we go through this, we have the typical categories. It's a little bit different than the order itself. We're trying to make this a little more simple by categories for people to understand. So those include restaurants and bars. I think that's pretty self-explanatory. Entertainment venues and museums, essential retail and non-essential stores and businesses, personal care services, gyms and fitness centers, playgrounds, pools, trails, and parks. So we have a lot of the outdoor thing going. Sports and sporting events, childcare camps and private schools, religious services, weddings and funerals. And you do notice weddings are in there. Historically, weddings has not been a topic that's been included. We did have, we did address funerals, but we're throwing weddings in there as well. Long-term care facilities, and then just general guidance and recommendations for all residents. So we'll start with the first slide, and then at the end of that slide, the restaurants and bars. I want to open up, and I want to allow, make sure we allow adequate opportunity to talk about each one of these slides and categories. So restaurants and bars, where we're at today is what we would, we call in there Phase 1A, which was implemented, implemented May 7. So if you look across the row from Phase 1A, for restaurants and bars, it shows bars, nightclubs, and microbrewery taprooms open with no more than 25 people. Today's cap is 25 per facility. It was a step in. When we look at Phase 2, that would include, well, and on the dine, I should go back on the dine-in for restaurants. The dine-in services allow 25% occupancy limitation for both indoor and outdoor seating areas. And so as we go into Phase 2, the dine-in is the same. It's 25% is what it's recommended. We don't, in that circumstance, we are still discouraging counterseating because it's too easy for those moving seats to get a little bit close. And then for bars and nightclubs and microbreweries, taprooms, we're looking at putting them also at the 25% occupancy rather than a flat 25. And if you look at those as we go down to Phase 3, all the way through Phases 3 and 4, the counterseating is still not, recommended to not be allowed. But the dining and the bars, nightclub, and microbreweries percentages go from 25% to 50%, and then hold at that 50% through Phase 4. 50%, and I'm going to give you a little illustration that might help you visualize this somewhat. When we think of the 25%, the percentages first came about because of the state order, and it was applied, from the state order to restaurants, or I'm sorry, I take that back, retail. And they had for facilities larger than 10,000 square feet, they had a 10% ratio, and for less than that, they had a 25%. And the formula they told us is take the total square footage of the area, divide it by 30, and then multiply it by one of those percentages, depending on how large the facility was. So we took that on, recognizing we couldn't be less lenient, for sure. And so that's what we've done. So one thing to think about that 25%, if you go back to high school math, maybe even junior high math, you go back, you think about it. One of the things we learned is an area of a circle. So if there's a pole, and I'm the pole, right, and I extend my arms, and if I could reach six feet out on all sides and form a circle, there's an area, that's my social distancing. If you think about a situation in a facility in which, and it's a pure situation, it's a bit theoretical, no one is related from the same household, everyone is perfectly distributed, based on that 25%, that is very close to the social distancing, if you calculate your local, your own social distancing and add it up another way. It equals about the same thing. So we know there was a methodology there. So when we look at 50%, we're comfortable with 50% because we know reasonably that a lot of people that are going to these places are already going to be under the same roof. And so we do, you are going to expect more than one person at a table or at a, really in any of the seating arrangements they have other than the counterseating, you're going to expect more than one in many of those and most of those. So it's not a perfect scenario. But what 50% really does is it really opens it up quite a lot from an eating perspective and from participating and just being at a bar and entertaining, having that entertainment with, around you, and that ability to talk to a few folks that you already know, hopefully. So 50% is good, and it opens it up a lot. What it probably prohibits more than anything are the intensely crowded entrances and waiting areas and that type of thing. And again, it does provide that social distance spacing in the facility. So that's really what it's getting rid of. But that's, that's part of why we came to the 50% on that. And when we think about a Phase 5, which we don't know today, that could be the same, it could be different. We'll have better data as we get a little further with our recovery order, and we'll know. But that's, those are the recommendations that we have for the restaurants and bars. And so I'd want to open up for questions. Again, if they're health questions, you've got Clay and his whole staff that can help you with that. And if they're protocol questions, I can try to help you with those.
Councilman Alice.
Thank you, and thank you, Jason, for a nice presentation. My question has to do around outdoor seating. It seems that most of the material that I've been reading is that outdoor types of activities are certainly a little safer than indoor activities where the air is contained. And I also noticed that, I noticed in the city of Cincinnati, they actually expanded outdoor seating for some of its bars and restaurants, and actually, for a short period of time, shut down some streets and allowed a kind of a, an area to be established for eating and drinking and that kind of thing. And so I wondered, have we given any consideration to expanding our outdoor areas that both bars and restaurants could expand into and maybe even get creative in our downtown area? We'd obviously want to consult them to make sure it's a good idea from their perspective. But where we might be able to open up some streets or, more importantly, close some streets where people could sit out in the open air.
That's a very good question. We have contemplated that. We're aware of that as well, and they're not, I believe they're not the only community that has looked at that. One, I'll cover a big piece, and I'll have Clay address any health aspect of it, and Mary Lilly Smith is with us and can address zoning and other aspects. But one thing I think we need to consider as we look at a use like that is an equitable application throughout the community. And as we, that's, that's part of what's driven some of these suggestions, is to try to make sure that we have two situations that might be in different categories, but maybe in a similar health environment, that we're trying to be consistent with that. So thinking about that, if we're, if we're talking about restaurants being able to expand, bars, for example, also being able to expand potentially into parking lots or sidewalks, we have to think about the equitable application throughout the community possibly as well and what that means. So just something to chew on. With that, Clay, if you would like to address any, from a health perspective, what that might mean, and we'll go over to Mary to talk about the more logistical aspects.
Yeah, I don't think that there's any doubt that outdoors is a mitigating factor for this condition for many reasons. So airflow is very important, Councilman Alice. If you've got good airflow, that means that, you know, viral transmission can possibly be less than it would be in a contained environment. If you add in factors such as UV for daytime activities, that certainly seems to help in this condition, as with most viruses. So however, that said, not every outdoor area is created the same. You'll have some that are covered and have very little air circulation. So I think you do have to be careful with your seating densities in those situations, but I do think that it is a mitigating factor for certain.
Good morning. I've been looking at Cincinnati's information as well, and today is the first day that theirs goes into effect. So they've issued permits, but today will be the first day that they'll actually have that dining outside. So we have the ability under the current code to issue, for the Director of Public Works to issue an encroachment license for sidewalks or streets for sidewalk cafe. And there are certain regulations in there. And just kind of comparing what, what we have the authority to do with what Cincinnati has published, which they have a very robust document related to sidewalk cafes, and they have an expedited review, but they're still requiring insurance, compliance, of course, with liquor laws, et cetera. And so we could model something like that, and that would apply primarily downtown and Commercial Street, where the buildings are set at zero lot line. And so in order for them to have any outdoor dining, they're going to have to be on public right-of-way. A thought about those restaurants that are not in the downtown and Commercial Street area is that they have parking requirements. So downtown and Commercial Street have zero parking requirements because of the zoning, but a freestanding restaurant elsewhere has parking requirements. But if we're limiting them to 25 or 50% occupancy, then obviously, they don't need parking for 100% occupancy. And so we could develop some type of, just, I think, need to get the lawyers involved in this, but I think we could do some kind of an administrative analysis that says that, you know, while we're at 25% occupancy, then you, here's what 25% of your required parking is, and you have to retain that, but the rest of it, and then you have to provide parking for whatever your outdoor dining is. There are some other considerations that I found in Cincinnati's, such as having access to restroom facilities, having handwashing facilities, and having ADA compliance in terms of being able to transition from, whether if it's parking lot or street, access into the building for the restroom facilities.
Thank you, and I'd just like to add that this industry in particular has been especially hit hard with this pandemic, and I would encourage us to be inventive and creative about how we allow them to move forward. And I, for one, as you can tell, would certainly be open to us considering this as an option.
Let me, if I could, I want to see if, we have Rhonda on the line as well, see if she has anything to add from a legal perspective on that question.
I think Mary covered the legal aspects of it really well. We do have a requirement that anyone using city sidewalks for sidewalk cafe has to get an encroachment permit. They have to sign an agreement. They have to provide a certain level of insurance and make certain assurances about it. We can certainly, if council desired, we can amend that even temporarily during the pandemic. It would probably, it would require an ordinance, since it's code provisions. It would require something of equal gravity, which would be an ordinance in order to do that. something of equal gravity, which would be an ordinance in order to do that.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Hosmer?
Jason, does the limited occupancy, does that also require the restaurant or bar to enforce social distancing?
Yeah, yes.
Or regulate it?
Yes, throughout all of this, the current order, the social distancing language, we don't expect would change from what it is in the current order, which is, I think it's make every best effort, or something like that, I could pull that out, but there's always going to be a burden of social distancing, I think, throughout all of this. As a matter of fact, I could look at Clay, but I believe we're going to have that until we truly find ourselves back at a time of normalcy.
But is that in this document, or, I haven't seen it?
Well, what we have in front of you in the presentation is, it hits the main aspects from the, kind of the specific requirements, there's some additional narrative that we'll have in a final document, and there would be things like, we want to be sure, we want to inform people if we're, that we can't be less restricted than state law, so we know that state law still has the 25%, 10%. I'm not sure the 10% really is very relevant today, so if state law changes and either eliminates the percentages for retail, or goes just to 25, that could be a change that we look at, but there are things like that. But I think without question, the planning document, we will hit those core pieces, which includes CDC-recommended social distancing and hygiene.
So all of these various business groups would be required to enforce social distancing, and not just limit the number of people that come into their establishment?
Yeah, there's still a, I'm going to try to find the language that we have. Right now, we have in the current order, and again, I think this would likely transfer over into future orders, that all businesses shall carry out to the greatest degree possible CDC-recommended social distancing and cleaning guidelines in all situations, including but not limited to when customers are standing in line, or when individuals, including employees, are using shared indoor or outdoor spaces, except as otherwise provided in this order. So I see that burden continuing throughout.
Subject to correction, excuse me, just a second. I believe that similar provision of some sort is in the governor's orders, is that correct?
I believe that's correct, yeah.
Something along those lines, similar to that, correct?
Yes.
Is the only, I just reviewed this today, so I apologize, but is the only requirement for masking at the personal service groups?
Yes.
Has there been?
Go ahead.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
That's specifically because of the very close distance of the, between the service provider and the service recipient, for example, getting a haircut, or nails, or whatever those salon services would be, it brings, you have to be closer than the six-foot social distancing, and that was the reasoning behind that.
Has there been any thought as far as restaurants requiring masking of employees or servers, or?
We have contemplated, and Clay will address that for you.
Yeah, we have a guidance out there, and I've noted that a lot of facilities have opted to do that with their employees, but at this point, it's strictly a guidance and a recommended practice, but we have not legislated that at this point.
Is that something that you think, from a public health standpoint, we should do, or not?
It's something that we can explore further, Councilman Hosmer, we haven't had those internal conversations. We specifically focused on those service workers, the personal care providers, when we worked through the original guidance.
Yeah, and another thing, and I know that it's in somewhere in one of the orders, but I don't know if hand sanitizers are readily available now on the market, but it seems like that all of these facilities should have ready access to hand sanitizers for both customers and staff, and I'm sure they probably do, but I was wondering whether we could put that in there, or have thought of the reasons for or against that.
It seems like a good idea, we'd need to explore the feasibility of supply, but I don't see a downside to that approach.
Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem Ferguson?
Thank you. Speaking from a little experience in dealing in the restaurant industry with the pandemic, there are a few things I want to first make clear. On the 25% occupancy, that would be, as I was doing calculations for restaurants that I work at, that would actually be increasing the number of individuals who could dine Not a whole lot, but a little bit, from the current, divide by 30, multiply by .25. So I want to make sure that that is correct. We will be stepping up just a little bit by going to 25% occupancy. Is that correct?
I believe the formula is the same. I'm going to turn to our staff, but I believe the formula on the percentage is the same, it would be calculated the same way. I'll look to Rhonda and Mary and see if they nod with that. We're looking at it, we'll see here.
Because what I'm looking at, it says 25% of occupancy, and divided by 30, multiplied by .25, for the, like I said, for the restaurants where I work, that would be stepping up just a few people, you know, from two to 10.
One thing to think about, too, is the document that we're looking at right now is a summary document. It's not intended to, like redefine, the real details are going to be, as they are in the current order, will be in future orders. So this document, at this point, is intended to reflect the same calculation method that is in the current order, that would presumably be in future orders.
Okay, so then, we really would not be changing from where we're currently at.
Ms. Luzer?
That's correct. Mayor Pro Tem Ferguson is, I think that for this document, the 25% occupancy was just used as a summary of the approach, but in the actual order, we're not changing, it'll still be the square footage divided by 30 times 25%.
Okay, thank you. And then, I wanted to address, Jason and I had talked several weeks ago when we first started this about the aspects of outdoor dining, and I know for most restaurateurs, this has been a quick learning curve, and, you know, in downtown and Commercial Street, I could see being able to add the outdoor dining, and it would be nice to be able to give everyone that opportunity, but on a day like today, that might be a challenge for everyone. But I hope that we can look at it broad-based, because I do think it would provide the opportunity for restaurants to add a few more tables in outdoor seating. Then, moving on to Councilman Hosmer, we are, as far as I know, everyone that I talk to in the restaurant business in Springfield, we're using gloves, we're, so our servers are going out to tables wearing gloves, we're also providing hand sanitizers, and, of course, frequent hand washing for 20 seconds or more has always been the mantra that we've used all along. But it is a challenge, and the masks are even more of a challenge. What I know some restaurants have done is create a little health screen that the employee goes through at the beginning of the shift, so that they are not exhibiting any symptoms, and then make it optional on the mask, because as an operator, if you can't get hold of any, it's hard to require that they be used. So that's a challenge, I think, that the food service industry faces today, and likely will going forward. Just as an FYI.
Councilman Simpson?
Thanks. I just wanted to add on to what Councilman Hollis said, I think that Richard and Mary and I all read the same article about Cincinnati, probably leading to that, but just, we've had a lot of examples, I think, of businesses that have been innovative, that kind of changed practices in a way to promote safety for employees and customers, and I'm glad that we're looking administratively on ways to kind of allow for that innovation, and if we run into those roadblocks, for example, some of what Rhonda talked about, that would require legislative action, I hope that's something that we'll be able to kind of look at as a council, because I think that's important to support. Just on a side note on that, too, I think also that, you know, with all those great examples of innovation, and organizations like, you know, the Discovery Center kind of completely pivoting to serving the community, and kind of helping the helpless during this time, symbolically, if kind of there's a way we could look at the city to kind of recognize those businesses and those organizations, you know, hearing good news and kind of seeing good things through this, and recognizing those that are doing what they can to help others, I think is important also as we're going through this.
Councilman Lear?
Thank you. I guess I have a question or two, and then maybe a comment or two, just on the presentation of this document. When we talk about indoor and outdoor, 25% or 50% of indoor and outdoor seating areas, I want to be sure, are we measuring those separately? I know there are a number of businesses, particularly the taprooms, that have a lot more outdoor space than they would have occupancy indoors, so how are we looking to define that?
Yeah, I believe, and that's allowable today for the restaurants, and I believe that you are correct, it's based on the square footage of the, what today is a lawfully approved outdoor eating area. And so we may have to look at that, if we talk about later loosening and what that space is, we may have to look at that formula, but right now, it's lawfully allowed. So there are places, in a lot of places, you can have outdoor eating, some places it might not be allowed, but, so in that lawfully allowed area, it's the same calculation as you would have inside. So theoretically, if you have the same space outside as you have inside, and inside you calculate, and it gives you 50 customers, you'd get 50 customers outside as well, for a total of 100 properly distributed.
Okay, so when we step up, for example, now we have bars and microbrewery taprooms limited to 25 people. When we move up to 25% occupancy, they would be able to do that calculation separately for indoor and outdoor space?
Yes, yeah, it would be applied the same ways for restaurants.
Okay, great. My other comments, one is I certainly echo the conversation we've had around creative outdoor spaces, and the way that we'll, hopefully, we can create additional outdoor spaces for folks. And to Rhonda's point that this would be an ordinance, require ordinance changes, I would hope that maybe we could do that as an emergency ordinance, and get it through quickly, and not have to have, you know, have this take a month to get to it. So I mean, that would be, on my comment, hopefully, this would be something we could do either as a resolution, or as an emergency, and get it through relatively quickly, is that possible?
I'd have to defer to Rhonda with regard to emergency readings. If we do cross over what are lanious regulations, where we're enabled by state law, we'll have to see if that affects our process at all, may not, but we'll need to check that. But I think that it's clear, though, that the fastest process we can legally do, it sounds like, would be something that works.
Okay, great. And then finally, just on the presentation of this document, I think this document will be a great tool to go out to the public, recognizing that it is a summary document. So I applaud you for trying, I know it's hard to take an ordinance and a set of rules and put them into something that's easily digestible, but I think this is really a good start at that. I guess only a couple of questions I would have, is maybe somewhere on this document, we put a caveat that this is, that we're using the metrics, and it's data-driven, and these, I guess, proposed dates and provisions are subject to, you know, the data on the dashboard, just something like, to that effect. And then I just wonder about Phase 4, that we've got throughout the document on all the pages, as I read it, right now anyway, there's only one contemplated change throughout all the pages on this document. And I recognize that's because, predicting the future is hard, but I guess I just would ask, are we better off just putting "to be decided," or something different than just having the exact same, or does Phase 4 just as a continuation of Phase 3? Just a presentation issue, I guess, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. The Phase 4, you're right, there are many similarities from Phase 3 to Phase 4, most of them are similar. What it's intended really to do is to create that date break, where we have a difference in the date, so it says, we're going to look at it. And there's always a possibility it could change, we could come back, have conversations, and decide that, based on the data, maybe Phase 4 is different than what is recommended here. So instead of causing a phase, a longer phase, that may be more than a three-week timeframe to create a six-week, and people are wondering, well, when are they going to look at it again? When are they going to look at it again? It does create a time break there, so that we, it does tell people we will look at it. But really, a lot of it's ramping up to, whether we call it four or five is force changes, what is the phase after a 50% for most of these? Because it's probably unlimited, is the possibility, and we haven't gotten into that, but when we get to the point of saying, with a lot of these uses, there are no restrictions, that's a pretty big decision. And so we're not sure when that will be, or if that will be, but part of this is really just to keep the time chunks in front of us, so people can look at those dates, and know that we're looking at those dates at the same time.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Councilman McGold?
Yes, my question is to Mary, I was wondering, you know, Richard brought up some good points, and the other councilman brought some good points, but a lot of businesses have a lot of questions, and they have a lot of ideas in terms of being creative, and creating those outdoor spaces, that we want to encourage. If they have a proposal, is there, can they submit that proposal to your office in hopes of getting some sort of permit, or special permit?
I'd be happy to help, but I'm not authorized to issue permits. So it is the Director of Public Works who issues the permits for encroaching on sidewalks and public streets. I think that we certainly could write some guidance, and if there are people who have ideas, absolutely have them call me, because that could help us figure out what makes sense for people. I know there've been several people who have seen the news about Cincinnati and some other communities. I don't know that we've had any contact directly from any restaurateurs in this regard, but be, I would be particularly happy to talk to them about what would work best for their business.
Councilman Lear?
I meant to mention, and it just jogged my memory, particularly in the downtown area, some of these others would not be limited just to restaurants, but perhaps with some of the retailers, might be interested in putting displays out on the sidewalk, or something to increase their visibility and opportunity as well, just, again, just a thought.
I think we can address that through, it seems like there is some regulations regarding sidewalk sales that we already have on the books, but be happy to talk to them about that as well.
Yeah, I do think we have to be careful, and that goes back to the equity question of, if a restaurant or a bar can serve their product outside, why can't I if I sell clothing or other products? At some point, if we're not careful, we'll have an ongoing outdoor garage sale throughout the whole community. So we've got a few things to think about there, but good stuff to think about. Okay, if there are any other questions on this one, we'll go to the next slide, which addresses, excuse me, entertainment venues and museums. And today, those venues are limited to not more than 25 people in the facility. And so again, this is fairly similar to what we just talked about. In Phase 2, that would go to a 25% of that calculated occupancy limitation, and also applies to individual rooms. The point of that is, is so you don't overload a single room and have people where they're not social distancing. So it means basically keeping them spread out throughout the facility. In Phase 3, that would go to 50%, and Phase 4, that would also be at 50% as we contemplate the future at that point in time. Are there any thoughts or questions regarding entertainment venues and museums? No, all right. You know where to find us if you have questions later, and we encourage you to forward those to us. We can run, but we can't hide. The next slide addresses playgrounds, pools, and parks. So those are our three Ps, I guess, for the day. Under the current order, the playgrounds are open with no more than 25 people together, so no more than 25 in that playground area. The pools are allowed to operate, again, with no more than 25 people together, and the parks and trails are obviously open, and departmentally, our park board and our director are working to make sure that we have social distancing and hygiene and those things. In Phase 2, the playgrounds would be open with no limitation, as far as the numbers. The pools would be, would go to a 25%, okay, I'm going to say this, of bather load, and that's a real thing. And for people who manage and deal with pools on a daily basis, they know what that means, but it's really, it's really a percent allocation based But it's so, it's really, it's really a percent allocation based on an approach that the pool folks understand. And so that would go to 25%. Parks and trails remain open in all the phases. As we go from phase two to phase three, again, playgrounds are open, parks and trails are open, and the pools would go from a 25% of bather load to a 50% of bather load for the remaining phases. Any questions or thoughts, comments about, uh, playgrounds, pools and parks?
Councilman Alis.
Thank you. Just, just to be clear, I think there was some initial confusion around, uh, Memorial Day weekend and the ability for pools to open up. And are we essentially saying here that, that because Memorial Day, I believe, is on the 25th, that, that that weekend, we can only have 25 people in a, in a, in a pool? Is that what we're saying?
That's correct. Yeah.
No, it's 25% of the bather load.
Uh, of the bather load?
Yes.
Oh, over Memorial Weekend?
Yes.
Yeah, I, right, I think, okay, right now, if the current order extends, uh, to the end of the month, then we're, we are, it is different. It doesn't address the bather load. Uh, however, and I think this is the question really, if we look at this and if this plan leads to a, an order which, if you look at the dates, it intends to, that a new order that would go into place, uh, actually going to place the day after Memorial Weekend, that would apply the bather load then, but we would have the ability potentially, if we wanted to, to address pools, uh, differently, I believe.
Actually, I think we may have an error in this particular one under the phase one, May 4th through May 25th. The order currently in effect allows pools to open on May 23rd, which is the Saturday prior to Memorial Day. I think that may address Councilman Alis's question. So we're incorrectly showing their pools closed, uh, under the phase one, and actually they may open on May 23rd.
Yeah, and, and Councilman Alis, is that your, is your question about whether they open or not or under what, uh, volume scenario? Because that's correct.
My question is, when we open on Memorial Day Weekend on the 23rd, as the mayor suggested, what is the occupancy load? I think many pools are, are planning on opening on Memorial Day Weekend and frankly are going to be very, very disappointed if, if they can only open with 25 total people. In fact, most of them, that basically negates them opening over Memorial Day Weekend. And so I'd encourage us, as the mayor maybe was suggesting, I'm not positive, that, that we change that date for pools to the 23rd and allow at least the, the 25% of bather load of whatever that means, rather than the 25 people on the 25th.
Yeah, I, I think you're reading that correctly. I'm going to defer to Rhonda on interpretation.
I think the intention is that the mayor will, um, sign the new order if he chooses to do so before May 23rd, and it's going to include a special provision, uh, going ahead and adopting the 25% bather load for swimming pools as of the May 23rd.
Thank you.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Ferguson.
Let me, let me, the intent is that pools may open on May 23rd, which would be the Saturday of Memorial Day Weekend.
At the 25% bather load, is that correct?
Correct, yes, thank you.
Mayor Protem Ferguson.
Which we know occurred yesterday. Is Parks Department doing anything in terms of sanitizing equipment at any point in time, um, like at the end of the day or, or in the morning before families start getting out? And then the second part of that question is, the playgrounds that also have restrooms, is there any special sanitation provisions being made for them?
I'll, I'll ask our Health Department folks, uh, if they're familiar with what the Parks, uh, processes have, have been.
Good afternoon, everyone. Last I spoke to Bob and his staff, I believe that their plan with the playgrounds was that they were, they don't have the capability to, to be able to get out on a daily basis and clean those, uh, that they were going to be posting signage to state that, so there is a clear understanding. Um, as far as the restrooms, I do believe that there was regular cleaning, uh, planned for those, but, but that, that was current of about a week ago was the last time I spoke to them. So if they've implemented other measures, uh, since then, I, I am not aware. But that's certainly something I can also, uh, check on and follow up on.
Mayor Protem Ferguson.
John, could you also check and find out if there are like hand sanitizers or sanitizer wipes or anything available for people to use at the parks?
Specifically at playgrounds or other facilities?
Playground and restrooms.
Okay, sure, I will check on that and follow up.
Thank you.
Yep.
Councilman Hosmer.
Hey Jason, how, how do we enforce 25 people on a playground? I mean, does parks do that? I mean...
They, they do have park rangers and occasionally staff, but, uh, we have so many parks, I, I wouldn't be able to tell you that there's always someone monitoring, so there's going to be a lot of, there's a lot of self-regulation at this point.
And, and then also, what, what is bather load? I mean, 25% bather load, is that a 25% of the people that can get into the pool or, and is that applied to people's, just, that are, gone to go to the pool and not swim?
Katie Towns with the Health Department is our bather load expert, so I'll, I'll have her address that for you.
She's evolved into our bathing load expert.
A recently acquired skill, let me just tell you. Um, so bather load is one person per 15 square feet in five feet of depth or less, and then one person per 20 square feet in five feet of depth or more, minus 300 square feet for every diving board. So, the pools are familiar with the formula. We do have a link, it's an industry standard, and so we'll be placing that so that everybody that doesn't know can calculate that.
Are there any public pools that are over the 25% bather load when they've got 25 people? Or is that all?
Over the 25%? There, there may be, but not many.
You know, it, it would seem to make some more sense, and maybe that's what we were talking about earlier, just to go to the 25% bather load at the very first rather than 25 people. I don't know.
So I think we're in the 25 people currently, and then we'll move to the 25% bather load on May 23rd.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilwoman Fisk.
Well, that was my question also. And so the 25% bather load, but then you can have sunbathers surrounding the pool, um, as long as they're, they're social distancing, then you can have as many? What does that mean?
Yeah, that formula gives you the total number of people in that whole pool area, including the deck area.
Okay, that's, okay. Thanks.
I'd also point out that Katie's talked to a lot of stakeholders, uh, through this process, who, uh, own and operate pools.
Any other questions? Okay, let me go ahead and restate this, just to make sure we're, that everyone's on the same page, is that because there is a bit of a difference in the current order and potentially going with a pre-order, that the, that a, a new order that would follow this plan would allow on the 23rd for the application of the bather load percentage, so that that would open up the pool significantly more from a maximum of 25 persons only. So that would go into place before the Memorial Weekend. All right. Moving on, sports and sporting events. Uh, today, uh, for non-contact sports activities, uh, they're allowed with no more than 25 people. And, uh, so those are non-contact sports and activities. Um, an example might be, uh, jogging or something like that. For non-contact practices of contact sports, so contact sports could be soccer, could be baseball, football, those are contact sports, basketball's a contact sport. Uh, for non-contact practices, uh, those, uh, yeah, those are allowed. Uh, for phase two, what we're looking at is, on the non-contact sports, uh, those are allowed with a 25% occupancy limitation for fixed seating, uh, spectator area. So on the assumption there are spectators, that, that percentage is really allowed or is in there to manage the spectators more than anything else. It's not about the participants really, because we don't expect that level of participation. For the non-contact practices, uh, of contact sports, um, that would be in stable groups of 25. So in other words, and, and I, I misspoke before, today that's not allowed, I don't believe, no. Uh, but it would be in stable groups of 25. So what that means is, is if you can envision a super complex, right, or a large acreage of multiple fields, we do not want a situation in which you could have to have 25 people maximum in a large acreage of multiple fields where multiple teams want to practice, uh, and have social distancing and not have contact. And so if you think about it from a field-by-field perspective, each group of 25 or fewer can do their thing, keep their social distancing, do their practice routines, and you can have multiple groups of 25 because they would not cross each other. So that's what that's intended to do, is to, start to open that up in phase two. Um, now, in, uh, phase three, uh, you'll see non-contact sports activities are allowed with really more fixed seating spectator area up to 50%, and that follows in phase four. On the contact sports, contact practices are allowed with limitations of groups of 25. So again, a soccer, a basketball in, in, inside, or a football, whatever that might be, as long as the group size fits that, the, uh, contact sports could actually have practices in which they may have contact. So that keeps the groups local. Um, and then as we go to phase four, that goes to a 50% occupancy. The contact sports and activities are allowed without the group limitation, and then we have an occupancy, uh, limit of 50% based on the fixed seating and spectator area. So phase four tells you that the competitive events are allowed, and the focus then becomes on the spectator area and the groupings of people, uh, that go to watch the events. Any questions about that?
Councilman Lear.
Excuse me. Is, is there a, a term of art as to what is considered a contact sport? Is soccer a contact or non-contact sport?
Soccer would be considered a contact sport, yes. So tennis, uh, would not be, golf would not be, um, uh, what else you got, John?
You, you haven't played golf with me, obviously.
Yeah, any, yeah, John pointed out, anywhere where the, you, that brings you in direct contact with another player, so baseball, softball fall into that category. Uh, there have been times through this process that, uh, some of you will get this reference, I feel like Dean Wormer from the movie Animal House where I'm advocating for no fun of any kind. Uh, we are, uh, trying to be as cautious with our recommendations as we possibly can. Uh, we know that there are contact sports occurring in other communities. We don't know if there's going to be consequences of those activities, and we do know that there's a, an increasing body of evidence that children can have adverse outcomes from this condition. So just understand that, uh, as a, a public health person, uh, we're going to always err on the side of caution, and that's where our hearts are, uh, with regard to this. We realize that this will not always be the most popular, uh, approach.
Well, I appreciate your approach. Thank you.
Yeah, and I, I have a correction for you too, want to make sure you're clear. Under the phase one A today, the non-contact practices are allowed, and what phase two does is it really just provides better guidance of, of keeping them in the manageable group sizes. So I stated before that they were not allowed. They are allowed, I just looked at the order, uh, but what phase two does is it says, they're still allowed, but we want to try to keep them in the manageable group sizes. So it's a little better way of managing, uh, that activity.
Councilman Simpson.
I was just wondering, what, what I talked about before as far as the difference in transmission indoor versus outdoor, are we making a distinct, any sort of distinction here between indoor and outdoor sports venues, or is that something, you kind of mentioned looking at how this goes in other areas that have opened these up, is that something that we might kind of evaluate based on, uh, other data?
At this point, we do not make a distinction, and I think that you're correct in the assumption that as we gather more evidence, uh, this is one of those areas that I could see changing, um, significantly. Um, you may have heard about a baseball tournament in the St. Louis area, for example, last weekend. Uh, there are going to be lots of opportunities for us to understand if there are consequences to these events, if they are focused on indoor versus outdoor. So, uh, we're going to continue to learn and evolve in our understanding of this disease very rapidly, I suspect.
Yeah, and part of the...
And also, I don't...
Go ahead.
Sorry.
Oh, please, go ahead.
Oh, um, I was also just going to suggest that as we're looking at these sports recommendations, that Councilman Lear, as a Kansas Jayhawk fan, could consult based on going to their football games on the experience of, you know, attending sporting events in an empty stadium.
Worth noting. Um, another piece to this strategy is that, as we think about it, when we think of sports, we start with practices, those are pretty local, right? And a lot of leagues and games are local, but then as we, as Clay mentioned, it, uh, we think about tournaments and they start to broaden the geographic, uh, range, and large tournaments broaden that significantly. And that's when you start connecting up community, other communities that may have higher rates of spread with our community. So part of the phasing here is anticipating that as well. Any other questions? Okay, go to the next item, which is essential retail, non-essential, uh, stores and businesses. This one's pretty simple. Uh, today, we are under the, uh, 25%. Uh, it's all depending on the size of the, uh, facility, but if it's a larger than 10,000 square foot facility, it falls into a 25% formula, and if it's, uh, less than 10,000 square feet, I'm sorry, if it's larger than 20,000, 20, or 10,000 square feet, it's a 10% occupancy limitation. If it's smaller than 10,000 square feet, it's a 25% occupancy limitation. And that formula is currently applied to retail, uh, by the governor's order, which is intended to extend, I believe, through the, I'm going to look at the mayor, to the end of the month.
Through May 31.
Yeah, May 31 to the end of the month. Uh, we apply that order a little bit more broadly than that, so we have it to essential retail and non-essential stores and businesses as well, which includes, uh, restaurants. And so, uh, what we show is in phase two, we showed the same percentage, but quite honestly, uh, we don't know what's going to happen. We'll be, appears that we'll likely be a week ahead of the state's order and the governor's next order, and we don't know what that will say. So this is one where there could pretty easily be a minor modification, depending on what the governor does. And, uh, again, I, I don't, for those of you that have been to, in, in town to big boxes that are under the 10%, and I'm talking more like the building supply stores, I personally have never seen them busier. And so again, these formulas are based off of fire occupancy, and those stores have a lot of square, uh, feet. Uh, my somewhat anecdotal, uh, thought on that is that with the very largest stores, like the building supply stores, the percentage really doesn't have a lot of impact. Uh, it's really the social distancing and disinfecting that's the biggest deal. But as you get smaller and smaller, I think the percentage does have some more impact. But our thought would be, uh, in all likelihood, that if, uh, if the governor's order would allow for it, that would likely just go to 25% for all of the stores, uh, at some point early in phase two, once we know what the state order will, will have in it. And then after that, it goes to phase three and four to 50%. Any questions? Nope, okay. We'll keep moving. Personal care services, uh, something we all know and love. Okay, um, right now, the, the personal care services are allowed in, uh, in phase one. Uh, they're under the 25%, 10% rule we just talked about, and masking is required within, uh, less than six feet distance. And we weren't sure how to get someone's toenails painted or their haircut or colored with, you know, uh, with, uh, outside of six feet. So we recognize that, uh, people will be within a six-foot space. And what this does is it presumes a, and we would be allowed to do this under the governor's order, 25% fully in phase two. Again, masks required, uh, with, uh, when less than six feet all the way through each phase, and then in phase three, going to 50% of occupancy limitation. So pretty typical with what you've seen in the retail and the others. Any questions or thoughts about this item? Okay. Gyms and fitness centers, the next slide. Uh, currently, uh, they're, they are, with the exception of, uh, classes initially, they were allowed in our first phase at that 25%, 10% percentage. Uh, fitness classes initially in the first phase were not allowed, then in that one, phase one A, that was... Then in that Phase 1A that was implemented on May 7th, we did, that order did provide for classes with no more than 25 in the entire facility. There was a lot of concern with people being in a similar space for a period of time, breathing pretty heavily, and that type of thing. As we look at Phase Two, the overall percentage would be at 25%. Phase Three would be 50%, and Phase Four would stay at 50%. As we look at the fitness classes in the right-hand column, we would move away from a 25 total in the facility to a 25% in the same way we did with the other activities, a 50%, and then a 50% in Phase Four as well. So again, pretty similar application of those. What we're finding is, is, and as you see some of this, we do have what we have in the current order, what we consider to be enhanced risk activities, and initially, we looked at those and didn't want to open those up quite as fast as some of the other commercial-type activities. But in time, and again, with the data that we have, there's more confidence, and you're starting to see in this plan a suggestion that they're treated more equally, more equitably. And so far, the data supports that that's okay. We'll see where it goes. Any questions about gyms and fitness centers? Okay. Childcare, camps, and private schools. Okay. Under the current order, daycares are, and we've always allowed daycares to be open, not that there isn't risk, but there's a significant need. And so they're open with, where the kids are in groups, people are in groups, in essence, of 25, not more than 25. And you see that carry on in Phase Two, and then you see that being lifted in Phase Three. Daycamps are open today if the primary role is childcare, with limitations of stable groups of 25 as well, so very similar to a daycare. The daycamp is very similar to that. And we've mentioned in the order, schools, but public schools are under the governor's authority. So we wanted to be clear that our authority is really private schools, and unless we would find a significant reason not to, we want to try to match up the best we can, because it makes sense to do that. So private schools, you see, they are closed as of today through Phase Two, but are allowed to reopen in Phase Three. And so that sort of presumes we're fitting the timing of the governor's order, and if something there changes, we can always look and adjust that as well. Daycamps, again, as you go from a Phase Two of stable groups of 25, it stays the same in Phases Three and Phases Four. We're really wanting to focus on group size more than anything else. Not so much the entire group, but the managed groups, so that the groups don't cross, smaller groups don't cross paths with each other, and they can keep them divided, and we think that would work pretty well. Any questions on childcare camps and private schools? Okay. Religious services, weddings, and funerals. This is, these are topics that a lot of people are interested, very interested in. Currently, we have in-person services of no more than 25 people for religious services, and we also, for religious, allowed a form of a drive-in service that was requested sometime early. And that, I believe that number, I'll look to Ron, but I believe that was the same number we had for funerals, but we did not include weddings. And then, in, what we're looking at in Phase Two is going, instead of, again, from a flat number, to a percentage. So this would include religious services, weddings, and funerals. And so we'd go to 25% of occupancy, which again would apply on a room-to-room basis as well, in the same way we're looking at retail and some others. That would, again, change to 50%, assuming the numbers are good in Phase Three, and carry into Phase Four at 50%. Questions or concerns, thoughts about that?
Councilwoman Fisk?
Jason, I personally know of three weddings during this Phase Four time period, and if I would happen to be a mother of the bride, I would be really in a panic right now. And I know some of these weddings are, the wedding is actually in Springfield, but then the reception is out in the county. So this is something I think you'll be getting some questions on, and I think the sooner you get this information out, it will really help these families, because, you know, I honestly wouldn't know what to do, because you have so many out-of-town guests coming in, and it's going to be really an area that I think, it's going to be kind of hectic for these families.
Yeah, thank you for that. I agree, certainly. We all know, for the most part, weddings take quite a bit of pre-planning, and so being able to provide that guidance will be very, very helpful. And the other thing, as we mentioned when I was giving you the example, the 25% reaching out six feet, with all of these, when we think of the 50%, and particularly when we think about, like, weddings and these types of events, that will more than provide adequate numbers when everyone's recognizing the social distancing. So quite honestly, as long as there's social distancing, that won't impair them at all from that perspective. So that'll be good to have out. So thank you for that. Any other questions?
Councilman Alis?
I have just a quick question. I think I know the answer, but I wanted to confirm it. I know the county's reg on religious services is different than ours. What is their current situation on churches and religious services?
I believe when the, when we had our implemented, our Phase 1A order, May 7th, I believe it was the very next day, the county amended their order, and for religious activities and services, they lifted any ratio, and I believe that they are enforcing simply social distancing and certain prescribed hygiene and disinfecting-type protocols. Clay's nodded and said, yes. So they do not have a formula. So going back to Councilwoman Fisk's thoughts, if you're in the city, you'd be under wherever we're going to be at with the Phase Two. I don't anticipate the county going backwards, so if you're going to be in Green County outside the city limits, you have a slightly, I'm going to say, a slightly different approach. And the reason I say that is because, again, a 25% would equal about that social distancing each way. So if you're outside in Green County and you have to socially distance, the total number should be fairly close with both approaches.
I might add that the county order itself, as Mr. Gage indicated, did not include a capacity limit on religious services. However, guidance was given by the county commission that they discouraged churches from meeting because it was not safe, and they urged them to use online services. So while they do not have a limit, the discouragement was there from the county, just because of safety reasons, that they should not meet in person other than through virtual services. So there is that distinction, as Mr. Alis noted, between the city and the county.
Yeah, and one thing you'll notice here is, is early on, because of that so-called congregate setting, people close to each other for a long period of time, and in some places, with a higher percentage of high-risk attendees, we had looked at the religious activities a little more restrictive than a typical commercial activity, and you will see in Phase Two that we start to bring the same approach for both. Clay?
And I would also point out that we've developed a fairly comprehensive guidance that can be helpful in walking back into seated church services. We know that in those settings, a lot of times you have that density and intensity of interaction that can really facilitate communicable disease spread. So that's the reason for the cautious approach.
Other questions? No? Okay. Thank you for that question. All right. Long-term care facilities. This one is pretty easy and is pretty consistent, I believe, with the governor's order, which no visitors allowed. And again, we've learned that the long-term care facilities may be one of the most dangerous locations for this virus to spread because of the impact to very high-risk individuals. So ours just addresses the visitors at this point in time, and you can see it continues to have no visitors throughout. At some point, if there's, if there's a reason based on the data that we have more confidence in that, we can always look at it, but we feel being conservative from a health perspective here makes a lot of sense. Thoughts or questions? All right. Public gatherings. This one is quite a bit different. You may recall, in the current order, the public gatherings is addressed at the end of the current order in Section Three. And it's intended to be very broad, and it has a limit of 25 or fewer persons in a public gathering. As we've contemplated public gatherings, we've, a couple of things we've thought about. One is, is that there's, in some cases, there is a difference between, say, spontaneous or semi-plan public gathering. There may be some similarities to a traditional gathering, maybe in a museum or some of these other uses, but there are some differences. What we believe, though, is that, based on the topics we've discussed, we believe that we really, for the most part, should have a category for just about any type of gathering that's out there, and have guidance, specific guidance that we've just gone through. And so you'll see here, the public gatherings deals more with a special event approach. So whereas today, it says no public gatherings of more than 25 people, and that's a pretty broad net, and Phase Two, you'll see no special events of more than 50 people on city property or streets requiring a permit per city code. And we're talking about it as those special permits, special event-type permits. And so this gets away from more of a general blanket or net on any public gathering, and really focuses more on our management of our property and our special events, and trying to keep those at 50 or fewer. And then it runs that from Phase Two through Phase Four. So it actually opens up the public gatherings in some ways, and pushes those decisions into categories that we just talked about, and we're pretty comfortable with that. And I, I'm going to defer to Clay. He might want to throw in a word or two on that, Clay.
So public gatherings, once again, are in that same category, I believe, as church services. We just want to be very, very cautious with bringing groups of people together. These become very difficult to manage from a public health perspective, especially if they're a spontaneous gathering. Getting the word back to people who are in a setting that they would normally go to, such as a church, is a little easier to manage than if it's a spontaneous group. That really relies on them accessing the information through media releases or through word of mouth. And so we always want to be able to reach out to people as a course of an epidemiological investigation, so they know that they're, what their risk is to the disease.
Questions or thoughts on public gatherings?
Councilman Lear?
Thank you. I know that, you know, this is a sensitive one in terms of, most of the festival, planned festivals and things I know of have already been canceled or will be canceled. And I also noticed, you know, on your very first introductory slide, you mentioned that this order expires the day before the planned opening, I think, of the fair. And that's kind of a difficult question, but I guess, what is the drop-dead date for the fair to make a go-no-go decision, and what are your thoughts about that?
Yeah, I've, we've been in contact with those related to the fair, including the director there, and I don't have an exact drop-dead date. We have been talking actually more about a rodeo coming up at the end of the month, where that's more important to them, as you would expect. We've also contemplated the fair activities, cover a lot of activities. For example, and really, the activities at that facility, they'll cover a sales activity, similar to a retail sales, the people are selling from booths. They'll cover dining activities, because they have dining events. They will cover, let's see, exhibit, sort of an exhibit activity, if there's an exhibit hall where sales is not occurring, but it's associated with a conference, they may have an exhibit hall from time to time. Again, all of those things are covered here. Concerts and entertainment, they certainly cover that as well, typically in a fixed seating situation, so we can cover that. And then the, probably the more difficult, as we talked about, was the carnival piece of the fair where there's a free flow of people. That's probably the trickiest piece of it all. But we've, we've tried to contemplate all those, and we think that we're going to give ourselves enough, give them, actually, enough time if, once we get into early to mid-June and we have more data on this, to see what that Phase Five might look like. So we think we're in a pretty good shape with the window there. Quite honestly, I would expect that a lot of the obligations they have, absent a government intervention because of the pandemic, are, for the most part, in place at this point in time, because for a lot of those types of things, you're talking about signing contracts at least a year ahead of time, if not longer. So those are, in all likelihood, mostly in place. So our objective would be to try to, based on the best data from the dashboard, to really see, where will we be in Phase Five? We think Phase Four actually may be able to accommodate a fair, but we do also contemplate the possibility that Phase Five could provide, could provide more flexibility with the fair and other activities. But we think we have enough lead time. We're contemplating that, and we'll be in contact the whole way, to try to make sure we can time our decisions there with the need that they, the timeline that needs that they have. So we think we're in pretty good shape right now, but we're not quite ready to call the question on that just yet. Other questions? Okay. The final sheet, we call it all residence. This is, this is not a, it's not the mandatory sheet, this is the encouragement sheet, but this is part of the guidance that comes out that says, hey, we're going to encourage seniors and vulnerable populations to stay at home. That's the same, it's always going to be the same. So whether they're, whether we're, you're getting two or three cases a week, or whether we're getting 50 or 100 cases a week, it still makes sense to stay home and not take a chance while this is going on, and there'll be a time when people can feel more comfortable getting out. We're also encouraging work from home, if possible. That's something, as an organization, we still are doing to the greatest degree that we can. We think that makes sense for any employer that can do that. We encourage limiting travel outside the community to be essential only. And then, as we look in Phase, in the future phases, Phase Two, Three, and Four, we're saying encourage using masks during travel, and monitoring upon return from a high-risk travel area. Encourage quarantine upon return from a high-risk travel area. And so we have, obviously, our health department, and there are other sources to help people, when they ask the question, well, what is a high-risk travel area? We can at least provide some general guidance for that. But we don't want, we don't want folks that may have the confidence, and really, like all of us, want to get out some, to go to places that are high-risk and bring it back. So that we're just saying, be prudent, take certain steps there. And obviously, we're encouraging the physical, the CDC physical distancing, the increased cleaning, and the hand hygiene. Those are all very, very important. So that's what this is. This is kind of the big encouragement, please do these things, please be prudent, please be healthy-type recommendations. Any questions on that slide? Okay, that's, we have actually made it through all the slides. Kind of, I want to cover a comment earlier. These slides were intended to take you today to those decision point areas, those guidance points, recommendation points. The actual final product will have a lot of the other narrative we talked about that provides various guidance on the CDC recommendations and any other guidance in there that we think everybody needs to have. So that will be in there, but we didn't want to load you too, in this presentation, with too many pieces of paper, and focus on those areas where we needed to get your input and help lay out that foundation for the future. But we'll have the other things as well.
Mr. Gage, thank you for your leadership on this with our city staff, as well as Mr. Goddard, the Springfield, Green County Health Department. A lot of work has gone into this. The key thing, I think, is everything is fluid, and I don't want us to get away from the fact that we need to be flexible enough to change as events happen, hopefully for the better, as we get actual data to tell us what our next steps can be. The key timeframe here, and I echo what Mr. Lear said earlier, being able to set out the subsequent phases has just been so helpful. But those are guidelines, thoughts at this time, based upon what we now know, and subject to change, of course, according to facts. But the key timeframe will be that second phase, May 26 through June 14. And the intent would be to issue an order next week with that timeframe, which would, in essence, encompass what's in Phase Two. What we've got there, I do, did appreciate the discussion very much on outdoor facilities and what we might need to do from an ordinance standpoint, and so I know our staff will be looking at that, and if that requires council action to do that, to facilitate maybe a little more outdoor facility usage or that type of thing, I think that was a very good takeaway from this. But the intent would be to issue an order next week that would provide guidance, hopefully enough days in advance before May 26 to allow various individuals and entities to have enough time to ramp up and prepare. But I'm so pleased with where we are, Mr. Goddard, and colleagues on council. We all made the tough decision in early March, and that was, that was a difficult one. But I think we're paying, seeing the dividends come from that right now, being able to say, yes, we took a tough call early, it was so hard. Every person in this community, every person in this county's been impacted, one form or another, by this. And certainly, we all, we all have that weight on us. We want to do the best that we can for our community. But by taking that tough action in March, we're to the point now where we can start to, I think, safely open up. But having said that, with that safety goes the obligation, the personal responsibility that everyone has. Let's make sure that we do follow the physical distancing. Let's do, make sure that if we're sick, we stay at home, that we take care of ourselves. And that's all, that's a... that's a responsibility that each of us have. I do want to thank, too, all of our entities out there. I'll start with the business community, who has been just so flexible. And we had referenced in our discussions how innovative they have been to come up with ways to safely deal with customers and their employees. We urge that to continue. And if there are suggestions that entities covered by this have on how they can safely operate, we do want to hear from them. And so, I commend them for the work that they've done. I commend, our not-for-profit community, I'll specifically mention United Way, the Community Foundation, the Community Partnership, who have banded together to help our not-for-profit agencies through this. I want to cite out, too, our faith community, our Have Faith Initiative, headed by Reverend Mark Struckhoff and Reverend Bob Roberts, with 80 to 100 pastors from all different denominations and faith traditions, who talk weekly about not only how they can help with their own faith traditions, but also help our community. A good example was the weekend over Easter, when it was so cold and we had to open up homeless shelters. It was this Have Faith Initiative that stepped up literally at the 11th hour to make sure that that was happening. So, there are so many in our community, our educational institutions. Mr. Goddard and I had opportunity yesterday to be a part of a virtual Zoom, Missouri State Board of Governors meeting, as they're starting to talk about what Missouri State does. But we had just an excellent discussion. So, I'm so proud of everybody. No one wants to be in this situation. These are tough times. In my nearly 46 years of public service, nothing has compared to the last seven weeks. And we're all in this. We all feel the burden on this. So, I commend everyone. I commend our community. We're going to lick it. We are licking it, but we're going to have to do it the right way. And so, that's, that's the message and hopefully the urging on all of us, let's continue to be safe. So, I want to make sure everyone on council kind of knows the plan. Thank you for your review and your input today. It's been helpful. I think this has just been an excellent meeting. We'll continue to move. But I want to make sure that the community knows, we want to be flexible. We're going to follow the data. We're going to do what it says is the best thing for us to do. The biggest difference between where we are right now and where we are in this, we're in the second week of March, is that we have data. Back then, we were looking at projections, what we think might happen. But by having the data, we know where we can go. By taking the action we took in March, we were able to allow our healthcare facilities to ramp up, to provide the resources that they need. We were able to have the Springfield, Green County Health Department, and working with others, to get the necessary testing requirements. That's, that's been, and as I've had communications with the governor and other mayors of large cities, I feel very proud of where we are because we took the strong early act. And so, kudos to everyone on council, to everyone here involved on that. These are tough times, but we're doing well. I commend our community, and we're going to make it through it. So, with that, we'll stand adjourned. Thank you.